Ms. Marshall, roll call.
Mr. Armour.
Here.
Mr. Bowner.
Here.
Mrs. Denny.
Here.
Mr. Dougherty.
Yep.
Mrs. Essler. Ms. Hilfordy. Mrs. Jones. Mrs. Powell. Mr. Tinsley.
Here. Next on the agenda is the approval in minutes. This motion is the approval in minutes of the regular meeting of July 22, 2015, and also August 19, 2015, as presented. Do I have this motion? Questions or comments? Others in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion passes. 2.02 is the invoice listing. This motion is to approve the invoice listing for July through August 2015. Do I have this motion? Questions or comments? Others in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion passes. 2.03, the Treasury report. Mr. Armour.
Treasury report, as of 6/30/15, Pendelco's balance was $25,511,343. During July of 2015, local, state, and federal revenues totaled $4,628,703. Disbursements were issued in the amount of $5,538,180. As of 7/31/15, Pendelco's current balance is $24,601,866. Do I have this motion?
Questions or comments? Others in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion passes. 2.04 is the supplemental financial information. This includes expenditures, revenue, and student activity. Comments by members of the board? Just one announcement. In accordance with Act 48, the board met an executive session this evening to discuss litigation and personnel issues. Item for board information. Dr. Steinhoff.
Thank you, Mr. Tinsley. It was at our May school board meeting where we talked about some very ambitious work that we had intended to do this summer and has been completed, namely, a rewrite of a large amount of curriculum, a process that we wanted to start this summer and is continuing. And I indicated to you that we would give you an update at the end of the summer on where we are, given the investment that the board has made in this critically important endeavor, and also just the great value of what has occurred over the last couple of months. So tonight, I'm happy to bring before the board, for my superintendent's report, an update on that matter. And I have our supervisors of elementary curriculum and our supervisor of secondary curriculum, Ms. Danielle Murray and Mr. Chris Mazzino, who are going to join us tonight to give you an update on the work that's done this summer. And Mr. Gregg and I will share a few comments when they're finished. At this time, I'll turn it over to Ms. Murray and Mr. Mazzino.
We were here in May. Ms. Rosemary Fowler, Fowler and myself, were here in May. And we talked about a curriculum revision cycle process so that we could address the ongoing attention that is needed to address the curriculum for a school district. We came up with a plan. I showed, we showed you the plan. We showed you some prospective dates and so forth. So, like Dr. Steinhoff said, and with the help of Ms. Murray, we did, we have, with fidelity embraced this project, it was enormous. We spent an incredible amount of time writing curriculum. And before we get into it, I just want to thank you for your commitment. The teachers that worked in this process during the summer were enormously impressed with the district's commitment to revising this curriculum. It came up time and time again. So, we, I thank you on their behalf. Is the thing ready to go there?
Yes.
Okay. So, in the slideshow, really quickly, if you take a look at it, we talked about the steps in the process of writing curriculum, auditing, developing, adapting, adopting, implementing, and monitoring. So, every course is in a different place, every discipline, rather. Math is in a different place than science is in a different place, et cetera. Some were fire drills in a few, a few years ago because of Keystone tests, things needed to be aligned and they were addressed. They're being tweaked constantly in getting them to be where they're supposed to be. What we've been looking at are the related arts courses. We're focusing on middle school math. We're focusing on history, K-12. What we have talked about is vertical articulation with the teachers. So, everything from K to 12, all these teachers are working together and collaborating and having solid discussions about how one grade feeds the next. So, it's been a really good process and the teachers who have been involved in it have been receiving it very positively. So, let's see here. This is our particular process. We gave you a packet. Do you want to address some of this? We gave you a packet that has outline of what we've been working on.
So, as Mr. Mazzino said, this process is a huge undertaking. And most of the teachers that participated in it, and we looked at, at least from the elementary perspective, about two to three teachers per grade level, elementary attacked English Language Arts and Social Studies. So, many of the comments like Chris, Mr. Mazzino had stated, were very positive as far as this process. They looked at it as some of the best professional development that they have had because it really had them examining the standards and really looking at our resources, where we are and where we needed to be. So, when we looked at the process, we have a philosophy now that is K-12 for both Social Studies and English Language Arts, ELA, which is also included in your packet. And the way that the process occurred was, we looked globally at units of study. So, what we wanted the teachers to do was, look at where they needed to start the year to where they needed to get to the end of the year based on standards. So, not looking at a textbook, but rather really examining the standards and really examining the eligible content of which the students need to know and master from when they walk through our doors to when they leave. So, we provided an example of both the secondary and an elementary units of study. So, that's kind of a, at a glance, what the standards are and what the content is for each one of those units. Once they did that, then they explored, they took that content and then explored larger into what we have created as our curriculum template. So, they took those big ideas and now are fleshing out what that looks like as far as the big ideas and the essential questions. And big ideas are not something that can be taught in one lesson, but rather after a unit is done and now I have an in-depth understanding, what do I now know? What can I now have a conversation about? What knowledge have I gained as I have proceeded through a five to six or two to three week unit? After they develop the big ideas, then they move down to the essential questions. So, in a sense, this is kind of like a back mapping process. So, the essential questions are, again, the things that I'm able to know and understand by the time I'm done, not a lesson, but rather a unit. And then, from the, from the essential questions, they developed the concepts and the competencies, which are what the student should know and what the student should be able to do once they are done a lesson. And they attached all of those are based on the standards and the eligible content from the PA Common Core. So, from K to five in both Social Studies and ELA, those components are completed for each of the grade levels in six units. And what they're going to work on throughout this year and professional development is built in, we have a minimum of three professional development days that will be spent on curriculum writing. They will then also continue to work on what we consider to be the heart of this map, which are the lesson activities and then the assessments that are going to align with each one of the units within the curriculum map. So, they'll be able to see, is the programming working? Are the students obtaining and learning the standards? And they're able to show and demonstrate what they know. We also have a textbook adoption for Social Studies. So, we'll be looking to pilot different series and then have that adoption hopefully by the spring of 2016.
So, in the packet, we tried very hard to put this into a template so you can see it, but because we're using Google Docs, because we're using Google Docs, it didn't transfer so easily into, they don't play well together, PowerPoint and Google. So, if you just look really quickly so that you can see what Danielle was talking about, in the, right after the PowerPoint is a copy of what's a unit of, the overview of the English Language Arts, K to five, units of study. So, basically, throughout, we just gave you a snapshot.
Of where everybody is in the process right now.
Yeah. And what we're, what's really nice about is it's unifying our four elementary schools, too, so that all of them are doing the same thing, which is really, you know, it's, that's a challenge because sometimes places operate independently. And we need to make sure we're all on the same page. But after that page is kindergarten, I'm sorry, Social Studies, K to five, you'll see the units of study. And then, if you look, the next page with my name on it, you'll see the overview of what I did, oh, I'm sorry, that first page, the first two pages are what you did. I'm sorry. The first two, the first pages with Danny's name on them are the ones that, right after the PowerPoint, I apologize, are the courses that she worked on throughout the summer with the elementary teachers. I apologize. The next page is what I did with the six through 12 teachers. But I have to tell you that we worked together in the process. They were all in the same room together. Kindergarten teachers were talking to senior teachers, senior 12th grade teachers, which was great. It was a great conversation. What they discovered in the process was, they do the same thing, just the depth and breadth of it is very different. So, what they're doing with their kindergarten, first, second, third, is the same as what my 12th grade teachers are doing. We show you two samples of philosophy. One of the capstones of writing curriculum is that everybody truly embraces the same approach to teaching a subject. So, what you see here is the product of a lot of work. It's in the packet. And there's two. There's one for English, K through 12, and the next one for Social Studies, K through 12. And teachers worked really hard on this. It really, I have to, I mean, it came from maybe this big full page down to this paragraph.
With many drafts.
Many drafts. And they liked the activity because they got to hear what other people valued in their discipline, which is really important. Now, is what I was talking about in the beginning.
And I'll speak to the first one.
Go ahead.
So, we just did a sampling of one elementary and then one secondary map. So, what you're looking at on the page after the two philosophies are the fourth grade Social Studies. I just showed you two units of study. So, within fourth grade, there are actually six units of study, but it's a, out of glance. So, I chose to demonstrate two here. So, you look at the big ideas, which are then connected to the essential questions, which are then connected to the key concepts. And then, that then gets pared down. When you turn to the next page, it's just an example of the actual curriculum template. So, you're looking at the two units now. So, they're taking those three components that were in the units of study, and now we're expanding on them in the curriculum template. So, you have your big ideas, then your essential questions, the core standards, and then the concepts and the competencies. The concepts are what you want the students to know, and the competencies are what you want the students to be able to do by the end of this unit. The eligible content that ties into the standard, and then the lesson activities and the assessments that go with that. So, again, in the, in the final document, there are six of these that encompass the fourth grade throughout the year.
And it's the same for the high school. And I gave you a ninth grade sampling of Matt Baldus and Joe Kokasberger's document that they worked on together. It's ninth grade honors civics and government. So, you can see, it's the same exact process. They have the same exact things in their template. What's nice about it is we're using Google Docs, Google Classroom as the platform. So, teachers are able to do this throughout the district in real time, and other teachers can open up the document and they can see it in real time in another building as they're working on it, and they can collaborate. When we bring this to your attention for approval, hopefully in May, for board approval and adoption, they'll be coming in piecemeal because as we're finishing, we want to bring them to the board for approval. We will make the units of study, the scope and sequence of units of study, available on our website for the public to see. The actual template, the more in-depth fleshed-out document, will be on the Internet for the teachers. So, the unit, it's going to be very transparent. People who attend, parents, anybody in the district can say, this is what my child does in this course for nine months. They can see it. Big ideas, essential questions, key concepts. The actual curriculum template will be on the Internet so teachers can access that. This year, teachers will be feeding, tweaking, adding, massaging, grooming, these documents to get them ready to bring to you for your review and acceptance and approval, hopefully in May, is when I'm looking at it. That's our timeline.
Any questions?
Any questions? It's pretty comprehensive. It was a lot of work, and I want to, I have to say, I've done this in another school district as a supervisor of curriculum. The teachers here in Pendelco truly, truly embrace this process.
Embrace it, and it was.
Amazingly. And it was hard.
They left their days tired.
Tired, yeah.
But they were, they were very thankful for the explanation of being able to do this.
I'd like to just add, the leadership of these two, to get the teachers to make this happen. This is one, one piece of two-fold curricula from K to 12. And I think they just kept with them and didn't, were with them along every step and answered every tough question. You saw the scope of the courses that have been addressed, including related arts courses. So, this has just been a project that's every day, all summer. Once Danielle.
Yeah, every day.
Was hired. Danielle jumped right in.
Danielle just walked right into it.
She walked right in on the first day in July and just kept going. You know, some of the things that you'll see were in response to your concerns about math and revisions with math in sixth and seventh grade, specifically, eighth grade's still being worked on.
Eighth grade is still being worked on, but, yeah, they.
But the teachers were fully engaged in the process, and their leadership was incredible in the process.
And I was very impressed by the work that the teachers did. It was very impressive.
Yeah. The, the, to watch them, when the math, when we, when we started doing the math in middle school, they laid out all their units. And they, because they, their book, their current text is in pieces, it's not one comprehensive text, it's workbooks, they're able to shift things around. And to watch five teachers stand there and say, this needs to move. And they'd ask, I, as the leader of this process, why? Why are you moving this? Because it doesn't align with the eligible content. And by April, when they're getting tested for PSSA, they need to know this. And it's here, and it needs to be here. And I mean, it was really good stuff to see, really. I was impressed.
Any other questions?
See, I'm just, I'm curious if, how is, if you can compare it, if they're, if they have it, from like 10 years ago, how does this curriculum look compared to that?
More rigorous, in the sense that the expectations are higher because we kept asking probing questions like, how are you going to measure this? Like, it's great that you want to do this unit, but how are you going to measure it? And how does it relate to what's coming after and what it stemmed from? You know, teachers took very serious looks at, hmm, it took three days to show this movie, maybe we're not going to show this whole movie now. Maybe we're going to do vignettes and have students more engaged in discussion about the vignette. So, I think it's deeper, definitely deeper, in the core content that it's addressing. We're still working on the assessments, but the assessments are already really soundly in place. We're just going to tweak them even harder to make sure that they're really tight against the standards. From 10 years ago, you know, if a student goes through Pendelco School District now with this curriculum, they are clearly going to be prepared for college and career. They will be.
So, as Chris mentioned earlier, it really is looking at the vertical alignment and making sure that, as we, as we look at the scope and sequence of what we need our students to be able to accomplish, that we're looking at it and making sure that, although I may be teaching, say, main idea in third grade, I'm teaching main idea again in fourth grade, but it's going to look different. Because there's going to be a complexity of the text in there, there's going to be more rigor to the activity. So, being able to then align this from K to 12 and look at, it truly is aligned to the standards and what our students need to be, to know and be able to do in order to be college and career ready. So, there's definitely more rigor in it, and it's more about the examination of what's currently in place and what areas we need to, to enhance in order to make sure that we are, we are making them career and college ready.
Do you, in this depth that you've been through, find that the textbook publishers are sort of out in la-la land with a lot of stuff that shouldn't be? Or, I know their, their goal is to sell books, and they don't really know what's happening in the local 25 class, 25 student classroom, and that's where the rubber meets the rope. But I just never was impressed with all the stuff that's in the textbooks that is really superfluous. And I think this is, you've sort of gleaned out what is essential when they're graduating.
So, when we looked, when we looked at creating these documents, we looked at it as, looking at it as a standards-based and looking at the big ideas and the essential questions, not approaching it from the examination of a textbook. So, the textbook is not the curriculum. The standards are curriculum, and the textbook is a resource, but knowing that we're going to have to implement other resources in, in addition to or in place of the textbook because the textbook isn't going to do the job as a standalone.
I know we, we used to always get the textbooks to review, and they're overwhelming.
Yeah. There's a lot in it.
Yeah.
That you could never get to. One of the conversations I had with a teacher was, well, when we do this, we're going to get this, all this work finished, and we're going to review, we're going to start the process for textbook adoption, which involves examining textbooks, piloting, and then finally adoption and implementation. And I said, that doesn't matter because this is the curriculum. This is what you are teaching, the skills. The content, the textbook, supports the instruction of these skills. So, now, when you do select a textbook, chapter two, which would have followed sequentially for you in the previous textbook, is now chapter 11. So, you're going to be moving around in this book. This is the document we follow, not the table of contents in a textbook. That's not curriculum. That's a support. So, it's a, it's a, solid teachers have no problem with it, and they're right on it, and they see it. Teachers who may find the textbook to be the thing for them, and it happens, they're seeing it now, the process, that this is what we use. We want this, our goal, and we made this very clear to every teacher who engaged in this process, we want there to be, you cannot teach this course without consulting this document. We don't want to put a weigh-on shelf. We're not going to spend all this time, all this money, all this energy to have a document that we don't use. So, that's our goal. And I think teachers are, you can take a look at the samples we gave you. Teachers have stepped up, and that's what you're getting. You're getting a document that if you're going to teach civics, you need this to be successful as a teacher with that, not the text.
I feel like we're at the middle of the football field in terms of getting into the end zone. And there is a lot of heavy lifting and heavy pushing and shoving ahead of us. But to get to where we are in just 10 weeks has been, I would agree with Mr. Gregg, you know, a real testament to Chris and Danielle's efforts and their leadership here. Time and time again, day after day during the summer, I'm walking down the hallway and I see them in their office, just sitting at their desk and literally look tired at 5:00, 5:30, 6 o'clock. And, you know, how did it go today? And they're, they're giving us updates on how the curriculum writing went. And mentally, you can imagine what they went through when they're leading a group of teachers on a daily basis to develop the documents with the kind of detail that you just saw. So, I mean, this is kind of manna from above for a new teacher who comes in and has to deliver six or seven different subject areas at the elementary level. They naturally will fall back on a textbook as a curriculum in the absence of something else. We now have that something else that makes, gives us a viable and comprehensive curriculum and makes sure that any student in our district is leaving with the requisite skills, not subject to the whims or interests of a teacher. So, my compliments to the two of you, and I agree, thank you to the board for funding the work that was done this summer. And we wanted you to see that it was being put to good use, and it's going to lead to, I think, really exceptionally well-written curriculum that I will look forward to having the board ideally adopt and approve and bless at the end of the school year. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have a DCIU? Do you have a DCIU report? Next on the agenda, DCIU report.
A short report this month. Obviously, our large effort is to search for an executive director with Dr. O'Shea's retirement. And we're doing that very methodically and lots and lots and lots of. First of all, the board had to decide what we want in an executive director and what our, our next five years of the IU content will be, which really puts some stress on the board members. When you stop and think of why we're here sometimes, you don't really take the time to do that. But that really forced us the first three or four weeks to determine what, even with all the trouble we're having trying to get the Ashton facility completed, we still have a program to maintain for all three sections of the IU. And that's, that's pretty well cast in stone now for the next five years. And the search is moving along very expediently. So, in a month or two, we'll be able to assign somebody in that seat at the head of the ship in Morton. The MARPA project upgrades, the only active construction thing going on, about 95% complete. When you're renovating buildings, it's not like building a new one. You always have things that are in the way and, oh, I didn't know that. And then you got to work around them. So, we ran into some of that on bringing the MARPA facility up to its full capacity and what we wanted with all the handicapped children we are serving out there. And then also, you saw in the paper, we did get the five-year grant from federal government for the Head Start program, much deeper than the present Head Start programs. I don't think anybody really appreciates what Head Start does for the kids that are in that and the families. Head Start is really teaching a lot of them how to live. I mean, more than just social graces and cleanliness and manners and all those things that most families take for granted. We're, we're constantly amazed with how well those students do when they leave Head Start, they get into kindergarten, and they get into school. There's a foundation here which they wouldn't have otherwise, some organization to their life. So, this new grant, the $8 million will be well-spent, and we'll have a lot of highly-prepared children going into their formal training when they finally reach kindergarten and first grade and on through their school years because of the Head Start program. Sometime, we'll have to get one of the folks from IU to come over and give us a thumbnail sketch of all they do. Every, every month, I am amazed. They, just, it's, it's like a missionary outreach, really, for children that don't have that privilege. And we're glad we're, we got the grant. Because about two and a half years getting this thing, and finally, Dr. Rettleberg said, success, guys. So, that's the IU, the good reports for the IU programs.
Thank you, Mr. Bowner. Number five on the agenda, public comments.
I have some comments and some additional concerns. Lock is back on the retention pond. The rebar is out. Cigarette butts are gone, but the handicap access is still a mess. That just shows me a lack of attention to detail. When you have a lack of attention to detail, you cannot have a commitment to excellence. Took another account of the dead trees today. There's about 40 of them. You said the contractor is going to try again in the fall. What is going to assure us that they will be planted correctly this time and irrigated properly? Who will have the oversight on this? The pond with no fence, you're waiting for bids for it, I understand. You should put some kind of fence around it with the kids coming back. I know the planter did not anticipate this much water accumulating that area. Maybe another better solution to that problem would be a rain garden. You could do a Google search on that. You could reach out to the Penn State Cooperative Extension, their Master Gardener Program. We do stuff like that. Attending with the pond, additional concerns, the water is orange, which only leads me to believe that something is leaching out into that pond. There's a flock of geese that are getting very comfy there. They mate for life. They're given a, a nice habitat. They come back and they breed at the same spot every year. The lawn and the driveway is full of fecal material, okay? This is going to be carried into the school, and we're going to have a health issue there. Okay? And since there is no aerator, bubbler, or fountain in this pond, I was just wondering if there was any kind of monitoring done for West Nile. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is items for board action. 6.01 is personnel professional. It starts on page three. Continues on page four. Continues on page five. Page six. Page seven. On page eight on the top, it includes 6.02, the personnel classified, all the way through to the middle of the page of appointment, 6023A. This references Pendelco budget 2014, 2015, 2015, 2016, the Act 93 plans, the PDEA agreement, the PDESP A agreement, the PDSSPA agreement, the PA School Code Section 1108B. It is the administrative recommendation to approve all personnel items as presented. Do I have this? Do I have this motion? Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion passes. 6.03, Ms. Helferdy.
6.03, special education agreement for student number 055155. The motion is to approve the agreement with L. Winn for student number 055155 as presented. Do I have this motion?
Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion passes. 6.04, Ms. Denny.
6.04, student teachers interns policy. The motion is to approve the Pendelco School District Policy Number 307, student teacher interns as presented. Do I have this motion?
Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion passes. Mr. Banner, 6.05.
6.05, assessment policy to approve Pendelco School District Policy 127, assessment policy and deletion of existing policy 213 as presented. Is there a motion to approve?
Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion passes. 6.06, Mr. Dockery.
Item 6.06, home education programs policy. The motion is to approve PDSD Policy Number 137, home education program to comply with changes in PA law as presented. Do I have this motion?
Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion passes. 6.07, Ms. Jones.
6.07, English as a Second Language. Motion to approve PDSD Policy Number 138, English as a Second Language as presented. Do I have this motion?
Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion passes. 6.08, Mr. Armour.
6.08, reporting student progress. Motion is to approve Pendelco School District Policy Number 212, reporting student progress as presented. Do I have this motion?
Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion passes. 6.09, Ms. Helferdy.
6.09, pool supervisor. The motion is to approve the appointment of Daniel Campbell to pool supervisor at Northley Pool, not to exceed 10,500 for the 2015-2016 fiscal year, dependent upon construction schedule, contracted services agreement, no benefits. Do I have this motion?
Second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion passes. 610, Ms. Denny.
610, Music Therapy Resources LLC contract. The motion is to approve the agreement with Music Therapy Resources LLC for music therapy services as presented. Do I have this motion?
Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion passes. 611, Mr. Banner.
Coburn Project will approve the change orders as presented, Superior Electric Services, Act like EC03, added cost due to owner's requests and revisions for an amount not to exceed $24,071.01. Is there a motion?
Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion passes. 612, Mr. Disney.
Item 6.12, Overbook School for the Blind. The motion is to approve the contract with Overbook School for the Blind for student number 55087 as presented. Do I have this motion?
Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion passes. 613, Ms. Jones.
6.13, managed services agreement. Motion to approve the agreement with Interactive Health LLC, Commerce, Michigan, to provide IRS reporting services as presented and subject to solicitor review. Do I have this motion?
Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion passes. 614, Mr. Armour.
614, special education settlement agreement for student 081561. Motion is to approve the special education settlement agreement for student number 081561 as presented. Do I have this motion?
Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion passes. Ms. Helferdy, 615.
6.15, Malagre Kids School, Inc., Agreement for Student Number 81671. The motion is to approve the contract with Malagre Kids School, Inc., for student number 81671 as presented. Do I have this motion?
Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion passes. 616, Ms. Denny.
Item 616, special education contracted services. The motion is to approve a contract with Kathy Kersher for special education administration services from September 26, 2015 through December 1, 2015, on an as-needed basis as presented, not to exceed 60 days within the term of contract. Do I have this motion?
Questions or comments?
I'd like to just note for the record that Ms. Kircher's services will not be utilized unless we have vacancy in the position, so we're getting out in front of that, so we may need her again as interim Director of Special Education with the departure of Terry Carver Hall on October 6th. Then I want to be clarifying that this is not additional services beyond services that we need and will happen, please.
Thank you for that. All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion passes. 617, Mr. Banner.
PSBA Human Resource Services to approve an agreement with the Pennsylvania School Boards Association to perform consulting services and administrative job description assessment as presented. Is there a motion on the floor?
Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion passes. There's one more on the agenda and I'll read, it's 618. It's related to the PSBA candidates and this motion is to approve in a direct administration to vote for the Pendelco School District on the following candidates for the PSBA committee, Mark B. Miller, Michael Fanchino, Fanchinato, and Larry Feinberg. Do I have this motion? Questions or comments? Just wanted to, because I kind of wind it, Mr. Pupio, that is, that's...
That's the accurate pursuit.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion passes.
We hand in the board president an additional motion related to a personnel matter, very late resignation that we had, standard routine matter, but resignation from a professional staff member. We're going to add this motion to address this one as well and this has been addressed with the board also. Motion.
All right, so for the, 619, this motion is to approve, I'm sorry, to accept the resignation of Ms. Ashley Wire, teacher at Aston Elementary. Do I have this motion?
Second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Comments by members of the public? I, I didn't have a chance and I did want to, I did write notes, so if there's anything, if you just wanted just to relay back to us if there's issues at Coburn and Mr. Dotty, I didn't have enough to even ask you, even if it's you or Tracy, just to follow up if there's any issues for us to keep us, especially with, what, two weeks?
Sure. We, as the speaker mentioned, he addressed some things that have changed. Certainly, we hear from the community on matters that they are brought to, that they bring to our attention. Mr. Dotty's gone out and addressed some issues at the Coburn site. The speaker tonight brought up some new items, we'll go back and take a look at that tomorrow. There is a pond on-site that was required to be installed as part of the drawings, as part of the approval process. It did not require a fence to be placed around it, however, the district has determined that it's in the interest of the community and the students for us to install that fence. So we will be putting in a fence around the ponding area that he's referring to and that area has been treated as well. So we're comfortable that we've been doing the environmental steps that we need to do to make sure that that pond is, is in, again, okay shape, but we'll take a look at that again tomorrow since it's been brought to our attention this evening.
It just made me think about it, because I know it's at Newman. And was it a Sun Valley teacher? Remember when they did that study on the geese? Is that something that we need to do at Coburn?
We'll take a look at it. I mean, the, the issue of having geese on large, open fields is one that every facility is struggling with, that's for sure. The, the fact that this is a potential at Coburn is kind of news to us and we'll take a look at that. We haven't seen that, but certainly there are, you know, wide expansive areas on Coburn and that might be attractive in that, in that regard.
Right.
So we'll look at that as well as we do at our other sites.
All right. Yeah, I just felt, I wanted to make sure that at least we, somebody, you know, public comms, they, I wanted them to at least address every concern, so. I'm sorry, did you want to? Okay.
Can I, can I comment on that? If, I know we're looking into that fence for the other pond, but in the meantime, put up a temporary fence for safety reasons? Is that a possibility that we can have done before the kids start, please?
Comments by members of the public? Comments by members of the board? No. Just going to say, I guess it'd be the, before then last, before they come back, welcome back, staff, students, if you're, if you are listening in. And to the couple who are in attendance, it's a new school year. And I'll try to wing it, try to wing this one little comment and I, I said it this morning, so it's kind of fresh on my mind. It's related to the, to staff and teachers. Normal's not normal anymore and heroes aren't, aren't in comic books and video games. They are our teachers, they are our educators, they're the ones who learn and help teach our students. So this is as close as I can get to without looking at my cheat sheet, so. Any other thing? With that, our future meetings, we have a meeting September 16, 2015, 7:30 and a regular meeting Wednesday, September 23, 7:30. And actually, as I'm reading this, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm apologizing to the board this last minute, if there is personnel issues and so on, a possibility, if we need to help, to help our students and so on, we might need to have a, a special meeting to vote on, vote on certain personnel only, but hopefully we can be okay until 16th at least.
That'll be the goal.
So, yes, sir.
Does the Pope want to affect our meeting on Wednesday night, the 20th? My understanding is the Pope will only be here over the weekend, but he can leave some blessings for us as well.
Couple of weeks earlier, they're closing Philadelphia, so.
I know, you're absolutely right. But it's, Mr. Le, Mr. Armour brings up a good point. There was some discussions, some concern, you know, what should school districts do in anticipation of the Pope's visit, since it's going to affect the region. As I interpret the schedule, I don't see any reason for us to change our, our transportation or our regular school schedule with the fact that it appears to be primarily a Saturday, Sunday event. But I know several months back, there was a lot of alarming concern that we may have to make some adjustments here, it doesn't appear to be the case.
I guess this is, for Brian and Tracy, from what I heard, if anything happens, I was told that possibly he would go to Newman. Do you know anything like that?
No.
No? You didn't know that?
No, he's not.
It'll be in Philly. While you're looking up. The reason I was asking is, you know, from all purposes, the weather, if schools shut down, then obviously from the bus...
Governor, there's no, there's, or, Mr. President, there is no information that has flowed into Delaware County or County Council or any of the emergency services that would indicate that to be the case. This is, I think folks would like to feel as though it's not a scripted event, it is a very scripted event.
Right.
And security is of the utmost, so I don't believe that, that there will be any, any significant unscripted trips.
If it happened, it would have happened by now, they would have told us by now, you would like to think. So, all right. That clue, motion for adjournment.
Motion.
So, yeah.
..................................................................................................................................................................